My time.
Okay, that looks like it. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's 5:33 PM. Evening, everyone. I'm Marilyn Clarkson, town moderator, school moderator. Inscripted. Now that you've all sat down, could you stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance? And it's going to be led this evening by Brander Lake Masters.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Brander. Well, you guys are the faithful, the hardy souls. This is a smaller group than last night, which is usually the other way around. So I'm going to start by introducing the head table. We have, well, actually, you guys have changed your order. We have Mark Secoda right here. Everybody knows Mark, our town manager. And then next to him are our Board of Selectmen, Mike Aronson, Margaret Turner, and Rich Rita. And then Judy Rolfe, if you could just wave Judy, so that some people might not know who are the problem. She's our finance and HR administrator. And then we have our department heads. If you guys could stand up for me just for a second. Oh, no, sorry, Sharon.
I'm good.
Everybody knows Sharon.
I'm here.
Sharon Jerome, sitting on the end. You know, it's not my fault, it's not in the script they gave me.
I'm the caboose.
You talk to Mark about that, okay? Okay, so our department heads are here. First, Brooke Wakefield is our rep director, and now Parks and Rec. Has your title expanded to Parks and Rec Director? No, okay, but that's what it is. Too long to write. And then Jim Mayhew, who's our Director of Public Works, and Dave Neues, our police chief. And then a face which people, who people might not know, is Dylan Tucker, who's our new wastewater plant chief operator. He replaced Greg Campbell, who you probably remember, who left before Christmas. Yeah, and Greg trained Dylan, right? So now we're still in good hands? Good, good to know, okay. Okay, I'm first going to ask that we can be ordering tonight and not be shy, because I really encourage deliberation. And come up and use the microphone. It's working tonight, right? Is this a new one? That's great, good news. So come up front, and even if there's two people that are going to speak before you, that's fine. Just come up so that we can get a sense of how many people want to talk pro and con on whatever the article is that we're discussing. Don't be shy, okay? I can't say that enough times. Then the other thing is, please read the moderators' rules of order, which are immediately after the warrant, on the next two pages, pages 27 and 28. Because those are the rules, they're not Robert's rules. Those are like a thousand pages long. And please silence your devices, your personal devices. Just take a second, look at them, make sure they're on silent. You might hear mine go out, but that's because I'm timing, so cut me a break. Now, for handouts. Everybody needs to have their, this is called voter card, so when I just ask for a handout, just stick it up. It makes it easier for us to count if we see that we do have to count. And then these are your actual ballot votes, because the first three articles that we're going to be discussing are bond articles. And by law, those have to be voted on paper ballots and dropped into the ballot boxes. So the clock will run for an hour because it's a bond article. But we'll continue to deliberate on the rest of the articles while we're waiting for the hour to elapse. But so you should have three colored voter ballots with you. Little tiny ones, because we're not recycling paper, so we're not wasting paper, which is a good idea. You have handouts too, right? Some people have. Do many people have their in? Just the town report, we'll cover everything in here tonight. Okay, good. So, do I hear a motion on Article 4?
I guess they gave me the big one. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1 million for this budget for the engineering permitting and construction of distribution lines and facilities for water distribution system improvements from the treatment building to the east side of the Mad River, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $1 million of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, and to authorize the selectmen to select and negotiate such bonds or notes and determine the rate of interest thereon.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Okay, so the selectmen, if you're following along, you can see on Article 4 that the selectmen unanimously approve of this article. Okay, so now we'll have a presentation.
Morning and evening, everyone. So this warrant article does several things. It is an improvement of our water distribution system to reconnect well 3, which is currently not connected to our system at all. We're going to reconnect that well to the system. And we are going to connect both well 3 and well 2, and I'll show you a picture here. To our central treatment building, which is the bigger of the buildings on West Branch Road. And also, we're going to construct a new crossing across Mad River to connect that treatment building to the east side of the river and be able to distribute it to the majority of the properties here in town. And I'll explain this more here as we go. When we looked at this project with our engineering firm, Royal Tanner, they examined eight different options for meeting all of these goals. And they analyzed them from the ability to build it, construct it, maintain it, and cost. So we have looked at just about every different way to do this. Putting the water pipe on the bridge, putting it on the upstream side of the river. We just, we looked at a whole bunch of different ways to get the water from the treatment building across to the rest of town. The budget breakdown of $1 million is here. We have to do just some final planning and review. We have design engineering of the plan. If this warrant article passes, we're going to start the design work right away. And then we will put it out to bid for construction. We have an allowance for administration and legal. We have to apply for permits, and we have some administration within Town Hall that we have to do. And then the construction number is estimated right now at about $715,000. We have construction inspections and construction engineering, which is a person on site to make sure that the pipe gets put in exactly the way that has been specified. Okay, so I hope everybody can see this, but here is our current treatment building. Here is well 2, which is the smaller building, right on the cross-country trail that you see, that's closest to the river, that's right there. Well 3 is all the way down here on the peninsula that you see by the Mad River Trail, the big mound that now has a fence around it. That's well 3, that's down here. So the project is to bring, we're going to use the existing pipe that used to be connected to the water system, right here, out of well 3, and up towards Mad, this is West Branch Road. We're going to come up here, and we're going to bring the water across from the east side of the river to the west side of the river and connect it to the new treatment building, okay? That's well 3. Then we're going to connect well 2 here, up into the new treatment building. What we are trying to do is bring all of our water sources, all three wells, 2, 3, and 4, into this new treatment building, because there is a large holding tank in that building where we inject the chemicals, chlorine and pH-controlled chemicals. And that holding tank allows the chemicals to treat the water before it goes out into the system. So we can control the bacteria treatment of that water much better in this new treatment building. We used to just, well, we currently inject the pipe that comes out of well 2, we inject the chemicals into that pipe, and it's treated as it goes through the system. But we can't control the speed that that happens with. With this new holding tank, we can control the amount of time that the chemicals are treating the water. And that's much better for our disinfection. And it is much cheaper, because we can control very precisely how much chemicals we are using. When we're injecting it directly into the line as it's going, we don't have, we have to inject more to compensate for the speed of the water. There's no contact time, there's no, right? Yes.
Can you explain the history and the current status of well 3?
Sure.
Which is important to know.
Yep. Yep. So well 3 down here, we, can I get my book, just so I have the correct? So back in 2000, in the fall of 2017, we had a bacteria hit in well 3. So we had E. coli bacteria that showed up when we were testing the water in the well. We immediately shut the water, turned the well off, and separated it from the rest of our system. We have not used well 3 since that time. We have been treating it, and we have had an engineering firm and a hydrogeologist come in and analyze where that water is coming from, the aquifer, and trying to identify where the bacteria came from. That was actually the second bacteria hit that we had had in well 3 in the past 10 years at that time. We had one in 2006. So we have been working to try to solve that bacteria situation in well 3. I don't know if you guys were out there hiking around on the Mad River Trail, but we stripped all the cover off of the well. We put on an impervious mat on it, and then put the cover back on so that water going down through contaminants potentially coming from the surface would not get down into the well. We also closed some old monitoring wells all around the actual water well itself. Sealed those off. We tested for leaks in the pipes. And we have now, because we've taken all of those steps, we now have tested the well four times in the past six months, and we've had no bacteria show up. So we are ready to reconnect the well to the system. In talking to the Department of Environmental Services, they have said we need to, if we can, connect that well to this treatment building. That's what they want us to do, because we get the contact time with the chemicals. And that'll be another insurance policy on the bacteria situation for well 3. So that's why we're doing this crossing here and bringing the line into the treatment building, okay? While we have the river open here, we are going to install a line. Right now, if you go onto the Mad River Bridge, and you can't, sorry, the pictures aren't good here. Probably easy to see, but this is a concrete encasement of the water line in the bed of the Mad River. Okay, it's just off the bridge, okay, on Mad River, or on West Branch Road. This is deteriorating quite rapidly. In this picture over here, which was taken during Tropical Storm Irene, you can barely see the concrete, okay? And that was in 2011. Here, it's all, all of the dirt has come off the top of it, and we have what looks like the concrete's starting to break, right here. And the rebar inside the concrete is starting to show up. So we're worried, because that pipe takes all of the water that's produced in well 3, well 4 right now, and it brings it from the west side of the river to the east side of the river to the rest of town, okay? So virtually every property in town gets its water from this pipe. So we want to have a second, a backup crossing for this pipe. So while we are fixing the well 3 issue, we're going to install another distribution pipe right here, and we're going to put it in the same crossing. And it's further downstream, we're going to put it deeper in the bed of the river, and it should be a good backup for, because the current crossing is about 40 years old. We should have a very long-term solution for the crossing. So that's why we're installing that crossing, okay? So three parts to this. Well 3 up to the treatment building, this crossing, and the connection of well building 2. At the same time that we have it open to install this line for well 3, we're going to connect well building 2 into the treatment plant and get rid of that redundancy and have it, all the water treated in one spot, okay? So three things. Any questions so far? I know it's a little complicated, but.
So if you give me a call, is that no, that call free?
No, what the contact time allows us, we'll still test all of the three wells, okay? We will also test all of the water that comes out of the building for E. coli, or for any bacteria, okay? The contact time with the chemicals should kill anything, okay? But we're going to test both. We're going to test the raw water at the wells, and we're going to test what comes out of the treatment building before it gets to the system. And that's how we'll make sure that we do not have any bacteria contamination.
Will you be reinforcing the current crossing?
No, the current crossing, we don't, we're not addressing right now. There's no leakage. We did test it, pressure tested, it's not leaking in any way right now. There's really no way for us, we'd have to get a separate permit, because it's so far away. And that would be too costly for what we think the benefit would be. By the time we have this new crossing in, we should be all set. We're going to continue to use the old pipe until it fails, right? And then we'll have valves, we'll be able to turn those valves off and start using the new pipe. Yes?
Have there been a lot of complaints from the town residents, residents of the city, of shortages of water since 2017, not having well?
No, but we don't meet the current, there have not been any shortages of water. Wells 2 and 4 are producing enough. However, we did have a situation where, I just want to find my note here. In December of 2016, right after we had the bacteria hit at well 3, we had not put well 4 into service yet. So we only had wells 2 and 3 at the time, right? And we lost well 2, two weeks before Christmas. And we had no water production, no wells, in service when that pump died. And so we basically used our reservoir water for three days while we got that pump fixed. Had that happened during our peak demand period, which Christmas week is one of our peak periods, we wouldn't have had enough water over that three-day period. So we would have actually had to bring in tankers of water or find some other way to deal with providing you all with water. So that's why we need all three of the wells. We've got to get well 3 back into service, we really feel, because that provides us with that backup. And by, with all three wells working, we should have, we have plenty of water. Any other question?
Mark, is the capacity of the pipe, it just make you hear a growl?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be an 8-inch pipe, which provides us with plenty of capacity.
Are you going to run the water through both pipes? Are you just going to use the old pipe first?
We're going to use the old pipe until it fails, and then we'll have the valves in the system when we put it in, and then go to the new pipe.
What do you do with the old pipe?
The old pipe will be abandoned in place, because in order to go in and work on it, I mean, at some point down the road, this might be 10 years or more down the road, who knows? It could be tomorrow. Hopefully not tomorrow, let us get the pipe. But the town meeting, the selectmen, the town manager at that time, whoever it is, will just have to analyze whether or not it would be worth getting a permit to go in and fix the old crossing, or maybe do another crossing somewhere else, I don't know.
So, if I understand, why are we going to be running through both of those types of water?
No, it won't be going across the new one initially. It'll be going across the old crossing. Then when we have a problem, if we have a problem with that old crossing, we have the pipe in place to fix it. I mean, this is a construction project that could take, you know, a couple of months or three months. We don't want to not have any water, because we physically, we can produce all the water we want, but we can't get it to your homes, okay? Because your homes are on the east side of the river. So we would literally not have a way to get you water short of maybe a 4-inch fire hose or something, I don't know. We'd have to jury-rig something while we put the process.
The new one is a backup right now, yes. So that could sit for five days or five years?
Yeah, but it's the condition of, it's the condition of the pipe that has us worried at this point in the old cross, because it's, you know, it's showing that it's old. And all it takes is one flash flood and a rock to come down and hit it, now that it's totally exposed, and we could lose it.
If a question in the back, Mark?
Yes.
Mark, I was going to ask you, if you put in the new pipe, and you can decondition the old pipe at any time, once you've got new pipe?
That's correct.
You don't have to wait?
We don't have to.
You can make a decision if you feel the old pipe is deteriorating further, just to put in service the new pipe?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So why not just do away with the old pipe and go with the new?
We may, we might. I mean, that's exactly what he's saying. We will have that option, and we'll continue to pressure test it. I mean, there's going to be, there will be ways for us to know that it's in, it's in good shape. But if we want to abandon it the day after we put the new pipe in and put it in service, we can. I kind of like the redundancy, I like, we'll use the old one until it breaks. But I just don't want it to break until we have the new one in place. Any, anything, any other questions? Okay, so that's what this article is all about.
Any of the selectmen? So that concludes the presentation. Are there any more questions from the floor? Bill Larson? Come on up.
You need that one? About that one? Oh, here we go. Mike?
Which one would you like me to use?
Actually, that's not working. Okay, all right. I've got some concerns, not about the project itself, but about the timing and when they're asking for money. And my comments are pretty much based on an engineering presentation that was done at part of the budget period. And in the course of that presentation, a number of issues in my mind got raised that I would like to see answered before we authorize to grant all of this money to go ahead and replace. When asked the engineer, when will the construction take place? It's not until 2021. So all that's going to happen this year is design work. The actual construction is a year away minimum. And it's not likely that that schedule can be changed. Secondly, the state has not authorized, has not approved any of these changes, nor has the state issued permits for us to dig into the Mad River. I would like those permits and approvals of whatever work that could be done approved before the money is asked for. There is, in the presentation by the engineer, there was some question as to well depends on how you want to count capacity.
Are there any more questions from the floor? Bill Larson? Come on up. About that one. Oh, here we go.
Which one would you like me to use?
Actually, that's not working.
Okay. All right. I've got some concerns, not about the project itself, but about the timing and when they're asking for money. And my comments are pretty much based on an engineering presentation that was done part of the budget period. And in the course of that presentation, a number of issues in my mind got raised that I would like to see answered before we authorize to grant all of this money to go ahead and replace it. When asked the engineer, when will the construction take place? It's not until 2021. So all that's going to happen this year is design work. The actual construction is a year away minimum. And it's not likely that that schedule can be changed. Secondly, the state has not authorized, has not approved any of these changes, nor has the state issued permits for us to dig into the Mad River. I would like those permits and approvals of whatever work that could be done approved before the money is asked for. There is, in the presentation by the engineer, there was some question as to well depends on how you want to count capacity. Whether well three is really necessary. I just like a definitive answer, one way or the other, whether according to the state, we actually have to put well three back into service or not. There is a possibility, and the engineer raises this, of getting grants to cover some of this cost. I'd like the possibility of grants explored before we vote to approve a lot of money. Now, I fully realize that the selectman, in you authorizing this money, it doesn't mean that the town has to go out and spend it. Right? So I'm, it's clear that that's the case. But in the case of it, in the, I'm going to go back to the dam. In the case of the dam, it was considerable in my mind, money saved by not rolling over to whatever the state demanded in terms of, but, but coming up and negotiating a reasonable solution to the problem. I'd like to see that done in this case. And I think there's a potential to save considerable amount of money, particularly if you consider some grants as well. Now, my amendment that I'm going to read in a second because it's complicated, allows for the design approvals, it allows $175,000 to do the design work and the approval work, administrative work, but doesn't allow any money for construction at this stage. Now, what, what would happen is they design this this year and then the next town meeting would come back and ask for the money to actually do this. So with that, I will read my proposed amendment. Article, I mean, that Article four is amended to delete the amount $1 million where it appears in the article and substitute instead $175,000. And delete the comma between engineering and permitting and insert instead an end and delete the word end construction following permit. Delete the sentence, the board of selecting recommend approval three to zero. So that's my amendment. What it does essentially is allows them, gives the town the money to go ahead and do the design work and puts off the decision on construction for next year's town meeting. Thank you.
Could I have a second on that?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. So, we're going to talk about this, but would you like me to read what the article, the actual wording of the article as it is proposed to be amended? Okay? With those, okay. So Bill, if I have this right, you're asking for the engineering and permitting money to be approved, which is $175,000, and for the construction money to wait till the town meeting next year? I kind of grasped it, okay. So, the proposed amendment to Article four would be, and you have any books, so I'm going to read you the revision. To see if the town will vote, will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $175,000 gross budget for the engineering and permitting of distribution lines and facilities and for water distribution system improvements from the treatment building to the east side of the Mad River. And to authorize the issuance of not more than $175,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, which is RSA 33. And to authorize the municipal officials to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon. This is still a bond issue, so therefore it still requires a two-thirds vote. So is there any conversation from the floor on this amendment, on this proposed amendment? Larry Young, would you come up, please?
Did you read the article? Your reaction to the proposal?
That's a good idea, sure.
So Bill is correct that our expected timeline for the project right now, we have applied to the United States Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, who are the people who provided us with the grant for the water improvements that we made several years ago. So we have applied for that same program, so we have applied for grant fees. If the amendment is successful, then we will have to go back and change our allocation from the $1 million down to the $175,000. We will then have to prepare, if we go to the construction phase, we'll have to prepare another application and waiting, additional time for that approval. We feel that if we do it the way that Bill is proposing, do all the engineering right now, come to you in next year, in 21, March of 21, and say we ask for the $825,000, which is the balance of what we're proposing, right? We would not know if we could put that out to bid until after we find out if our next grant application is approved. So we're basically going to build in a 12 to 18 month lag in, in the project. We really don't see DES having any problems with what we have proposed with this project. We're doing everything that DES, we have been talking to them through the whole process with well three. And we're actually putting into place things that they have recommended to us when they inspected our system. So we, as far as the permitting for it goes, I don't, there's no hesitation from DES's standpoint, they're aware of what we are proposing tonight. And they're, they're not against, so that part of it is not a problem. And with this emergency that we had back in 16, again, to lose that crossing, if something were to happen in that additional time, whereas it isn't something we can fix overnight, we can't fix it in three days. It's just not possible. Definitely.
Thank you, Mark, but if I understood from Bill, the mere approval of this article would not require the funding of the, therefore if it is approved, it's still up to the select committee?
That's correct. And, and that, that's right.
Can everyone hear Larry Young? Could you, okay, I think it's best if people would come forward when they have questions so that, some people don't hear well.
Larry, you pointed out that when you approved the $1 million, we don't go right out and borrow the entire $1 million. We can split that up into several different bond issues. Right? It's just giving us the authorization to do it. If the market conditions are such that we get a better interest rate than we think we're going to get in a year and a half or two years, we might take it. But that's going to be a decision that the selectman can make between $0 and $1 million. And we can also use bond anticipation notes, which is the short-term bridge loan, right? Before we finalize it into a big bond issue. So we, we have several different things that we can do under the Municipal Finance Act to fund it. And, you know, we, we will do the design work, we wanted to start that right away so we can get the project started.
Are there questions from the floor? Yes, I see, can, can you come up, please?
There are questions. He mentioned rents.
Is there a possibility to continue?
We have a bid application in right now and we're just waiting to hear back on. And I'll talk about that.
Wait, no, Mark, Mark, come up.
Mike Farber, Mike Farber, 20 for the group. If, to Bill's point, if you negotiate and it comes in under $1 million, what happens to the funds? It makes sense that you would not use all the funds, I just wanted to be sure of that.
That's why, that's why we use bond anticipation notes and we only borrow what we need to construct. So if the, if the actual construction cost comes in $100,000 less, we borrow $100,000 less from the bond issue. And we use the anticipation notes to get us to the end of the project and then we just convert those into a long-term bond for how much it is. The, the $1 million authorization is the maximum debt we can spend, doesn't mean we can't spend less. Is that right to the question?
Yes, thank you.
Any one questions? Can you come over to him, please? People can't hear back there.
I just wanted to ask if you give a better comment on whether they support this amendment or not.
You guys are important on this.
Yeah, I, I definitely support this even though I live on the west side of the river. Support finishing what we started with our water system. So here's my layman's understanding of this, okay? Back when we had the problem with well number three during that period of December and we didn't have well number four operational, we were not, and well number two went down, okay? Even when we got well number two back on, we were technically not in compliance with DES regulations in the state because we could not produce with one well operating sufficient water for the busiest week we could possibly have in the year. Again, this is my layman's explanation. That was the reason why we had to bring well four on. Okay? So with well four and well two operating, we meet the requirements. And we were forgiven by the state when that well went down because they knew we were working to put well four in, we'd been in communication with them. So now you're in a situation where we have two wells that are operational and one that is not connected. It's not connected not only because of the E. coli, but because building number one, where we used to treat the water from that well, got struck by lightning and destroyed. Okay? All of the electronics gone. And so when we considered the process of how about if we connect well three up to the original place where the water was treated, where well number one used to be, state said, nope, we don't want you to treat your water that way anymore. We want you to use that new building that you just put in that has the holding tank because that's the state of the art and that's where we're going in this state and we want you to be there. So from my perspective, what's being proposed is something that is finally going to get us in compliance with some contingency backup systems so that we can keep going forward with some of the best water in the state.
I think the question was, do you support the amended one or not?
I, I don't support the amended article for the simple reason that I know how much administrative cost is involved in putting together two applications for permitting. I'd rather get it all done over at once. And I don't think there's any argument that we're far more likely to have a lower cost project the sooner we do it rather than delaying it. I mean, right now, we think $825,000 for construction. Two years from now, if we went forward with that, it could be a lot more.
I, I respect Bill's effort in putting forth the thought into this amendment, but the concern that I have and the reason I support going ahead with the full project is I'm concerned that if we put this off for another year or two, we might have to file new plans under much tougher guidelines, which might highlight the plant we just bought, built on, to treat the stuff at well four. You know, that might not pass muster under new guidelines that would come up. So as it stands now, as I understand it, the plan is acceptable to DES as it stands.
Yeah, I would, I would simply second what my fellow select board member said. To me, this is a multi-year project and so the sooner we can actually understand the parameters and get everything going on the paperwork, I think the better it will be in the long run. And I, I would also note that as far as the, the article itself is concerned, we need to think not only of water to our homes on the east side of the river, but the importance of water to maintaining us as a healthy resort and for businesses to flourish. The last thing you want to do is become known as a town that has a spotty water supply.
Okay, thank you. So we're just trying to speak to the proposed amendment right now. Are there any questions from the floor? Have we done discussing it? So can, I will pause here. You called a question? Where it's going. So we'll, we'll bring you to a vote now on this proposed amendment. Are you clear on what you're voting for? And what Bill is asking in this amendment? To reduce it from $1 million to $175,000 and why? Or do we need a reexplanation? I'm just, are we clear on what we're voting for? Okay, because now's the time to speak up if not. Okay. So all those in favor of this proposed amendment to Article four, please raise your cards. And all those opposed? That's easy. Okay, the amendment fails. So now we have the original, the original Article four open before us, so we'll go back to that and continue to debate that. If there's any more questions from the floor on the original article, which I feel like it's been pretty well covered. Does anybody have any pressing questions on that? Come on up.
I'm just curious how much the application for the grant is for?
A million dollars. Oh. Yeah. Well, let me speak to that. Under, we have put in a project cost of $1 million. The rural development grant program provides funding from the federal government for water projects like this, up to 45% of the cost, total cost of the project. So we would be eligible for up to $450,000 in grant monies if we were successful. So, thank you for asking that, Mark, because I almost let you vote without talking to you about this. So right now, the town of Waterville Valley, we, in 2010, received 45% of the cost of the water projects that we did that, that we voted on that year. And we got a million and a half dollars from the federal government for those repairs on a $3.7 million budget. So that was a very good thing for the town. However, in the 2010 census, they found that the median, the census results found that the median household income in Waterville Valley is $81,000. That puts us outside of eligibility for grant monies under the rural development program. So we are going to be conducting a survey, we're going to be mailing every resident household in town a survey sheet and asking you to fill them out and return them to a third-party company that is conducting the survey for us, that's certified by Rural Development. And they're going to determine what our current median household income is. All right? If we can lower that income level down to $66,000, we will be eligible for the 45% grant in our application. So that, that goes hand in hand with this project. So you're going to be getting a mailer in the next week or two. It's going to have a sheet of paper that you're going to fill out, please fill it out, mail it back in, there'll be a self- Mail it back in, there'll be a self-addressed stamped envelope in there. You can put it back in that and mail it. It goes to the third-party company. They collate all the information for us. Selectmen, town hall, nobody gets any of the, the sheets, okay? It goes to that party, that company. And if, if we get that, it's very important, if we get that down to sixty-six thousand dollars, we will qualify for the grant program. So that will be happening and that's part of it. Did that answer your question, Mom? Okay, thank you for asking.
It's important to get everybody to fill out this survey, especially if they're not wealthy.
That's just presidents. It'll just go to the post office.
Go ahead, Katie. Can you hear me? Oh, they're clear. Um, Katie Smith, Florida. Um, the grant money, when you get the grant money, does it go in just to the revenue line item? Or does it actually have to go directly to the?
It comes in as a separate revenue. So we never bond the amount. So let's say we got the four hundred and fifty thousand and the project did cost a million, we would only have to bond the five hundred and fifty.
So it comes in before we?
That's correct. That's correct. Yep.
Okay, are we done deliberating on Article Four, our first bond issue? Yes, okay. So I would like to see a vote on Article Four now. This is going to be a different procedure. We already filled the, we already filled the amendment. So now we're back to voting on the original article as is stated in the warrant. So this is the bond article. That's why you have these little ballots, okay? Now, we don't want to have to get up three times. We have three bond articles. There's two more after this one. So I'm going to ask you to mark your bond, your green, your ballot, your green one that says Article Four on the top of it. Yes or no, are you in favor of Article Four? Yes or no? And just sit on it, because we're going to go through the other two and then we're going to start the clock for one hour. I'll have a slight recess after we finish the other two articles, bond articles that is, and we'll get up and process over to the balloting boxes and you'll give them to the town clerks. Oh, don't forget to, I got it. I'm not very good at sign language. Um, don't forget when you go with your votes up to the balloting area to bring your registration card with you. It shows that you're a registered voter. That's how they'll identify you. So there won't be any voter fraud or whatever that I need to report. Okay, so everybody has marked their articles privately, ballots for Article Four, and we're going to move on to Article Five. Do I hear a motion?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for general engineering services in support of the development of plans, budget estimates, and bid documents for town facilities and projects on the capital improvement plan. And to authorize the issuance of not more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, which is RSA thirty-three, and to authorize a selectman to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon.
Second?
I second.
Thank you. So the, the selectmen unanimously recommend approval of this article. And again, it's a bond article, so it takes a two-thirds majority vote, not a simple majority, to pass. Um, Jim, are marked, who's going to do the presentation?
All right, I'll give you an overview of what this is and what we are trying to accomplish with this. Uh, we have a lot of problems in town with our roads and our buildings. And they've been neglected for quite a while, especially with drainage and things that have come up by the shifting weather that we have and just the environment. So what we're proposing to do is, none of us are experts, we're all volunteers. We met with engineering firms over the last week. We sent out a request for a proposal and five firms got back to us. As far as coming in here and mapping out the town, as far as our roads, our buildings, our, you know, water systems, everything that we've got, and putting it in line with the planning board and working as well on their own ideas of what would be a good way for us to look forward to spending money to build ourselves up and get ourselves set for the future. Now, a problem we've had in the past is that our projects are too small and we are too far away, that we've been limited to a pool of bidders. And we've sent bids out on certain projects where they've come in so high we couldn't meet them with the budget that the town has approved. Or we've had proposals come out where no one has made. So hopefully by doing this, we can have a plan and a group of, and an engineering firm that we work with that will put these things in shape and be able to guide us into how we might want to, say, do most of the roads in town over a four or five-year period and attract some construction companies to come in and take a contract with us over four or five years, as opposed to looking at the contract being too small to come in this section at a time, this section at a time. But if they knew they had a few years of it and they had an engineering contact to work with where there'd be a consistency through it, it's, it's an attempt we are going to try to make to get ourselves more competitive in, in this arena. The same thing is on the CIP, is we have some building renovations and building models that we need that maybe we can be told through these engineering firms, we don't need to spend money for these things. We need people who have the expertise that we don't. And, you know, architects as well. And the firms that we've spoken to have got a lot of experience in resort towns and small towns as far as planning. We've talked about making the town more pedestrian-friendly and more bike-friendly. This would be a way where someone can actually put the cost to us and help represent us better in a way where we know what it's going to cost and we know what's realistic and what's not realistic. So that's what we're looking at. And a hundred and fifty thousand is a cap. You know, we haven't had anyone come back with dollars on these projects because these projects, I'm sure, will come out segmented to a degree. How much is it going to do to the roads? How much would it do to do a new town hall? How much to trace the water? We have another warrant coming out later that deals with our water system and things like that as far as tracing some issues that exist. So in a nutshell, that's what we're thinking and that's what we're asking for approval.
Just a second, what, very quickly, what, what Mike said. I'd like to note that we had, I think it was last week, we narrowed down the, the firms to make presentations to us to five. I think, and we are now going to look at how to rank, order them and decide which one of these firms can best help us going forward, serve as our engineering consultants. And I think for the reasons that, that, that Mike mentioned.
Mention one other thing that this firm can also do is that they can assist our planning board. So we have a developer comes in with an application and we're trying to review the application against the, the regulations that exist in town. This engineering firm could supply that help to the planning board and come back to them. And we've seen some examples of this in our interviews of letters that they've written saying, this plan doesn't comply with this particular subdivision regulation. It needs to do this, et cetera. Very specific things. And that's another advantage that we would see in having an engineering firm who worked with us on a regular basis.
Another point I missed was that the firms that we've spoken to all have specific history and success in municipal grants as far as getting us the money to do a lot of these projects through various sources.
We're done. Questions from the floor? Please come up front.
Hi, Tom, this is a gentleman. So is this related to the descriptive information on page seven of their annual report? Where it says, continuing improvements to catalog facilities, here to look down. Okay. And I would ask that when you, to add to the descriptive information, you could add sidewalks and sidewalks. I know, but it's not in the description, so. I know, but over the years, there's things, I remember thinking about it, but it'd be nice if it was in there so we knew that you were doing that. The other, the other thing, do you have to have names of the firms that you're talking to? Would that be possible?
It's a public hearing, so.
So we are, we are talking with HEB engineers. H E B, Echo Bravo. Hoyle Tanner, Wright Pierce, DuBois and King, and Horizons Engineering.
Thank you. Now, do these engineering firms, are they professionals in landscape or tech?
Yes.
Techs and others?
Yes. And they're all multi-disciplined firms. Right.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions from the floor? Well, come on up, Bill. Bill, come up here. I'll meet you halfway, Bill.
Is this anticipated, I'm sorry, Bill Watson on the River Road. Is this anticipated to be a one-time cost or an ongoing expense?
What did you say?
This is a, this is a one-time, this is engineering services specifically for projects within the CIP. So it is, right now, we're anticipating a one-time cost. That's why we're asking to bond this. Because engineering, design engineering especially, is something that before you can put anything out to bid or go to a contractor or somebody to give you even budget numbers, you have to have a plan. We have approached many different contractors, especially for road repairs. We've been working for several months with a, a large paving company from the southern part of New Hampshire to get some numbers that we can include in the CIP to do necessary road repairs. However, the first question we always get is, what, what do you actually want to have done? Where is the plan? And until we have an engineering firm to do this work and prepare these plans and do bid documents for us, we're not going to get effective bids back for these projects. So that's what this money is for. And we have very specific projects in the CIP that we're going to have them work on. Does that answer your question, Bill? It's a one-time, it's a one-time thing?
Yeah.
Are we done deliberating? Okay, so we're ready to vote on this second bond, Article Five. It is the yellow ballot. And just mark it so you don't forget and sit on it. And we'll move on to Article Six. Do I hear a motion?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-five thousand dollars to defray the cost of planning for public facilities through development and implementation of an asset management plan for the town's wastewater collection and conveyance systems. And to authorize the issuance of not more than a forty-five thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of Municipal Finance Act RSA thirty-three. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for a clean water state revolving fund loan. Repayment of the loan funds will include up to a hundred percent forgiveness of the loan principal in the amount of up to forty-five thousand dollars. And to authorize the selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine their rate of interest thereon.
Second?
I second.
Um, the selectmen unanimously recommend approval of this article. And again, it's a bond article, so it requires a supermajority to their vote. Uh, we'll have a presentation.
Apologize for all of the wordiness of that warrant article, but it's required by state regulations that we do it exactly like that. So what this means is there is this clean water state revolving fund. It, it is designed to help towns with their sewer treatment plants and collection systems to go out and to survey them for condition, location, and we will get a complete report at the end of this project that lists out all of the different parts of our sewer system. And it'll include an analysis of what parts might need to be repaired, what parts might need to be replaced, et cetera. This forty-five thousand dollars, we have, you have to authorize us to bond it. We're not going to bond it. They are going to, we're going to fill out all the paperwork, do the project, and then the state is going, we're going to apply for a loan to this fund and then they are going to forgive the loan. They've already told us they'll do this, but we need your authorization and it has to be done through a bond issue. So that's why this is in the warrant the way it is. So anybody have any questions specifically about what we're doing in this project? We're, we're basically surveying our sewer system. And then that way, we will have background information and we will be able to plan how to make repairs in the future because we're going to know what the condition is on.
So are we done discussing it? So this is the, the Article Six. That's your blue ballot, wastewater assessment. So at this point, it is? Six thirty-eight PM, I'm going to open the ballot boxes for voting. And I need you to process in an orderly way, make a line, and be sure to show them your card. And please come back to your seats quickly so we can keep going through these articles or we'll be here late. Very nice.
...to that, to do some emergency repairs. If we do not use this money specifically for emergencies and we want to add it to a project, so we have a larger paving project or something like that, we can access this money to be used as part of a larger repair line. This, right now, we have about forty-four thousand dollars in the account. And so this thirty thousand will be added to it. It'll give us a total of seventy-four going forward. So that's what it's used for, emergencies.
Questions on the floor? Come on up.
Deborah Weiger, Urge for Link. Just what has our historical annual emergency repair costs around?
I, wow, question we don't have. So it really has varied. I mean, it depends if we have storms or something like that where we have to do road sides and drainage, something like that. We, the amount would be larger. I don't really, I'm just trying to think of an average. Jim, maybe forty thousand a year, thirty thousand? It really depends, right?
Well, it depends, whether the tenant and/or, you know, in terms of emergency.
Yeah, so there's really not an average number, but we have spent thirty, forty thousand dollars at a time on repairs. This past year, we did some, you saw the infrared, the heat, where we heated the pavement and did some patches around town. That was, how much, Jim? About twenty-two?
Three.
Twenty-three thousand dollars that we spent this past summer on that, on those repairs. But it really does vary a lot.
Any more questions? Okay, we're ready to vote on Article Nine. This is for the thirty thousand. All the, uh-oh.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So Article Seven through Article Sixteen all say unassigned fund balance. You said that select no more money, basically from last year's budget. So if we approve all of them, it doesn't increase our doing work at tax rate? But if we don't approve them, does that money go back and lower?
No, if you defeat these articles, the amount that would have been used from the unassigned fund balance, it just stays in the fund balance. It does not go to reduce taxes. But the selectmen, in October, when we set the tax rate, the selectmen can use on a discretionary basis, they can use fund balance, which they have done in the past, to lower the tax rate at the time we set the rate itself. Okay, so they can add more fund balance in at tax rate setting. Okay, so our fund balance right now is nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-one-fourteen. That represents approximately fifteen, sixteen percent of our operating budget. And the recommended amount by Department of Revenue Administration is anywhere from eight to sixteen percent. So we're at the top end of what we are, you know, recommending. We are proposing in this budget to use four-hundred thousand. Because we're anticipating an addition to the fund balance at the end of December this year. So we will plus it back up. So you authorize us to use it, and then we'll return money at the end of the year. Yeah?
Why do you cannot use this fund balance for other than emergency repairs?
Because we want, we do want to retain some of that, some of the fund balance, because it's basically our checkbook balance. So we get to, before we send the first half tax bill out each year in May, our fund bal, our balance in the checkbook gets very low. And we don't want to have to borrow money in a bridge loan to get to the tax billing. So this fund balance allows us money for operating purposes throughout the year. So we don't want it to go too far down. So that's why we didn't recommend to do it that way. And I just want to point out that over the, since two thousand and thirteen, okay, there had been warrant articles where we've recommended using this unassigned fund balance. We've returned one and a half million dollars through that. That did not go on the tax rate. It was paid for by money that you already had appropriated. Right, so we're just using that, that remaining balance at the end of the year. So that you guys don't have to raise the money over and over again.
Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor of Article Nine, please raise your card. And all those opposed, it's unanimous. Move on to Article Ten. May I hear a motion?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twelve thousand dollars for the replacement of selected guardrails in town. This appropriation is to come from the December thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen unassigned fund balance available on January one, two thousand and twenty.
Second?
Second.
Selectmen unanimously recommend approval of this article. And this isn't part of the budget. Who's going to give the presentation? Jim?
This is for guardrail replacement. If you go down on West Branch Road and go across the bridge, you'll see that there's some guardrails in town that are in very rough shape and need to be replaced. So Jim has gone out, he's inventoried them, and that's where this warrant article came from. So West Branch Road, Bridge, the section on Snow's Brook Road, there's some guardrail there that are part of this, right, Jim? Or, or not? Okay, couple of sections, all right. Where else? Those are the two, okay. All right?
Any discussion on this? Should we bring to a vote? All those in favor of Article Ten? And opposed? Unanimous. Article Eleven, may I hear a motion?
I move that the town vote to authorize the selectmen to enter into a three-year lease agreement in the amount of a hundred and five thousand dollars for the purpose of leasing a one-ton plow truck and to raise the appropriate sum of thirty-five thousand dollars for the first year's payment for that purpose. This lease agreement contains an escape clause. This appropriation is to come from the December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen unassigned fund balance available on January first, two thousand and twenty.
Second?
I second.
Unanimously approved by the selectmen. Not currently included in the budget until you raise your card and say so. Presentation?
This is to raise and appropriate, I just want to, that's my typo. It isn't to raise the appropriate. It's to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars. So can we just have a minute to reflect that? Sorry, I missed that. Is it correct in the? Okay, it's correct in the, it's correct in the warrant. All right, so, our script is wrong, sorry. So we use the state bid for budget purposes, but we will put this truck out to bid if you approve this warrant article. This includes the truck, the front plow and wing system and all of the hydraulics, and a dump body. Is that correct, Jim? And so we're going to re-purpose the stainless steel sander that we have on our current truck. Yes, Mike?
The current truck was in two thousand and fourteen. It's got thirty-seven thousand hard miles on it. Majority of it's plowed. So far, we know that the front end needs replacement, and we've already fixed the frame once. And then the truck was out of service for three weeks, so we only had it during a real bad time last year. We only had one truck about ten months. Its reliability is in question, and that's why we're having to replace it.
So two thousand and fourteen is the one we're replacing?
Questions on the floor? Come on up.
How it has to do with the number? Will this new truck be able to help clean sidewalks better than they're currently on?
At present, these trucks, we don't, we only use them when we, when our sidewalk tractor was down for the last two storms. And it's being fixed right now. So the reason we might have seen the trucks trying to take care of some of the sidewalks is just to, you know, stay ahead of it a little bit until we got the sidewalk tractor back up.
Okay, that continues to be an issue related to, you know, winter, cleaning sidewalks and such.
So for those of you who might not have heard, he asked if the truck could address or treat the sidewalks, plow the sidewalks. We don't like to do that. We have a sidewalk tractor to use on the sidewalks, number one. But yes, we do use the wing at some times to clear the sidewalks. One of the things that we're going to be doing with the engineering firm, and one of the recommendations that we keep getting, is to fix our sidewalks and to use other methods, like wider pavement, okay? If we start to fix our roads that way and do away with sidewalks and actually replace them with wider pavement and mark them with paint, then yes, this truck will be able to clear that area. And that's one of the things that we're going to be talking to the engineer about. How can we make our roads more pedestrian and bike-friendly? And so we'll be doing that during, during the engineer design.
You can also leave the curtain, make a ten-foot wide, ten-foot wide sidewalk that a truck can actually ellipally use, proper base material.
Yep.
And last, just to kind of continue with this, last year at the town meeting, I brought up the issue of the sidewalks and also the recycling and things like that. But we discussed this meeting, and I did not see any reference to that in the meeting minutes.
We'll, we'll talk about recycling later in the operating budget if you want. Yes.
Okay. Because I guess I'm a little concerned, just people come to the meeting, we make comments, and I'm surprised not to see some of those issues in the minutes. Because how then does the, you know, town respond to some of the issues?
If we, the minutes of our select meetings, we discuss recycling, how do we let things happen on a regular basis? It's one of our top topics. So also, we find what we're doing and what we're doing.
Well, I, last year, I asked to get a report at the next town meeting on those things. It was the sidewalks, so that's all. All right, thank you.
Any more questions from the floor on Article Eleven? Ready to vote? All those in favor of Article Eleven? Opposed? One, two, three, four, five. It's a young vote. Okay. The article passes. Like to hear a motion on Article Twelve?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-four thousand dollars for the payment of the second year of a four-year lease on the Public Works Backhoe. This appropriation is to come from December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen unassigned fund balance available on January first, two thousand and twenty.
May I have a second?
Second.
Selectmen unanimously recommend approval of the article. It's not yet included in the budget. But Judy's keeping a tally for us over there. We're spending your money.
I could do that. Fan-like thing?
Yes, I did. Okay, simple majority required here for vote. Presentation? Any words of wisdom?
Sorry to waste your time, but the state makes us separate all of these lease articles out individually. So this is the backhoe that we use for many different purposes in Public Works. It's a loader backhoe. And it pushes snow in addition to loading vehicles and doing a lot of ditch work and other work during the summer, so.
Any questions, any deliberation on this? Article Twelve, backhoe? Good, let's bring it to a vote. Oh, hang on, hang on. Got some late ones.
Why don't you buy the backhoe? Why are all these equipments leased?
Yeah, this is year two. But for, for a lot of the vehicles, we have gone to a lease rather than, some of them are well over a hundred thousand dollars, so they would be probably a bond issue if we purchased them. So we're gonna, we're gonna pay for them over time. It was brought up by the select board a few years ago that with vehicles specifically, if we have this escape clause and we don't feel we need the vehicle any longer, the lease is a better way to go than a bond issue or other bond, or other borrowing. Or paying cash, you have to pay for it all in one year, and that can affect the tax rate. So we went to the lease for most of our vehicles because of that, so that we have that flexibility. If we don't need it, we don't own it at the end of the year. That answer your question, Bill?
Any more questions? Ready to vote on Article Twelve? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Article Thirteen, may I hear a motion?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty thousand one hundred dollars for the payment of the third year of a three-year lease for a Public Works plow truck. This appropriation is to come from the December thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen unassigned fund balance available on January first, two thousand and twenty.
May I have a second?
Second.
Selectmen are unanimously recommending approval of this article.
We own the truck at the end of this lease. So we make this payment, and the truck is, belongs to the town. Any questions about the truck itself?
So if there's no questions from the floor, I'm saying it very slowly, because sometimes there's late questions. We'll bring it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Thirteen? All those opposed? Unanimous? Do I hear a motion for Article Fourteen?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars for the final closeout cost for the Cochrane Pond Dam project. This appropriation is to come from the December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen unassigned fund balance available on January first, two thousand and twenty.
May I have a second?
I second.
Again, selectmen unanimously recommend approval of this article.
We finally did it. This piece of paper is the release of the administrative order that we have been under for the dam project. So Department of Environmental Services has said that they've accepted all of the work that we did at the dam, and we can now operate it. The total, yes. Very happy to get that yesterday. The total project cost for the project is six-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-two dollars, plus some, we undetermined yet, final legal fees, because I have been talking to the town attorney regarding especially this administrative order. So that's why we are asking, we, you have currently authorized six-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars for the project, so the twenty-five thousand will be added to the six-forty to give us the amount to final closeout of the project. The overruns came from primarily a requirement by the state that we engage a, we engage two engineering firms instead of the one that we had. We actually would have come in under budget had we not had to get that second engineering firm, but they required that as part of a plan to review. And we didn't have any choice. We had to do it. So that's where the cost overrun came from. And the contractor itself, the company that actually put the blocks in place and did all the work that you saw last summer, they actually came in a few thousand dollars under their budget. But that engineering, that additional engineering cost was in excess of seventy thousand dollars. So we really, and we had no choice. We fought it. We did argue with them for several months, but they had the administrative order, so it's pay them now or pay them later.
Any more questions from the floor? Ready to vote on Article Fourteen? All those in favor? Opposed? One opposition. Moving on to Article Fifteen?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-two thousand dollars for payment of the second year of a three-year lease for the recreation bus. This appropriation is to come from the December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen unassigned fund balance available on January first, two thousand and twenty.
May I have a second?
Second.
Selectmen unanimously recommend approval of this article. All right, so there's, there's no presentation. Are there any questions from the floor about this? Article Fifteen, twenty-two thousand dollars. Come on up.
Hi, we're in demand. Quick question, so after three years, can we off the bus? Yes.
Good. So we're ready to bring it to a vote? Well, go ahead.
Is there a way this bus can take the high school students to the?
No, we, we have looked into that possibility, but for regulations of, if you turn a vehicle into a student transport vehicle, you have to, the driver has to have special certifications, and the vehicle has to meet very specific standards and be inspected to do that. We have looked at having this bus do that in the past, and it's just not been economical to do that. And once you start providing that service, you have to continue it for the school year, is my understanding. So especially with the driver, we would have to have backups for that driver, et cetera. So it's not, not anything that we have pursued because of the cost of doing that.
Can I just add, because I remember this conversation coming up before, that I don't have high school students anymore myself, but I remember that part of the conversation was, they all get out of school at different times. That's a big part of the problem.
That's why I don't make one, one to school.
Okay.
Morgan Dean, Sy-Sy. How many buses do we have for the rec? And is there any sort of history as to why we have one or two? I'm not sure exactly how many we have.
We currently have two. We have been using them along with the school department to provide different services. The old bus that we had, or that we have, cannot make trips. We don't let it go beyond Holiness. So only within the S A U area because of maintenance issues. But it is useful to get the, especially the summer campers around, and let them, it just gives us extra capacity, because the buses are limited to fourteen passengers. So we have two right now.
Any more questions on Article Fifteen? Shall we bring it to a vote? All those in favor, Article Fifteen? All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on, Article Sixteen. Sixteen, do I hear a motion?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars for the conduct of a water system asset management project. Twenty thousand of this appropriation will come from the State Department of Environmental Services planning grant, and the balance of twenty thousand to come from the December thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen unassigned fund balance available on January one, two thousand and twenty.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Selectmen unanimously recommend approval of this article.
Same as the sewer side, different, different program of grant monies. The water, on the water side, will be looking at our treatment facilities, the, all the distribution lines that are all over town, the valves, and all of the things associated with that. We also, out of the twenty thousand dollars, we can use matching work by town staff. So we may not use, probably will not use all of the twenty thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance, because as Jim or other people are going around when they're doing the survey itself, their time will count towards our match. So we'll report in the budget next year how much of the unassigned fund balance we actually end up using.
Sorry. Okay, good. Are there any more questions on Article Sixteen? Should we bring it to a vote? All in favor? And opposed? Passes unanimously. Article Seventeen, may I hear a motion?
I move that the town vote and raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars in support of the Ray Cultural Center programs. Funding for this appropriation is to come from general taxation.
Second? This is a simple majority vote required. Is Leah here? I think we'll give you the cordless. Are those your supplies?
There are. My name is Leah Elliott. I'm the director at the Ray Center. And this evening, we are asking for an additional ten thousand dollars to our annual budget. Can I talk louder like this? No, I have to talk in this. So most of you are familiar with the Ray Center. I just wanted to... The Ray Center works to bring in some additional aspects such as cultural arts. So just a quick note there, in our mission, we are looking to increase understanding of the natural world, build community, and recognize the value of art. Right now, annually, we have about four thousand people who come through the cottage. In addition to that, our outreach programs, which include our mobile learning center and, um, additional after-school, uh, school activities, um, have us working with about twenty-five hundred children annually, which is pretty fantastic. That's the lack of leader. So looking at some of our programs and why I'm just making a quick summary here is to let you all know if you're not familiar with some of the things that we do here. So our program, um, always includes storytime, which is a local and visitor favorite. Having George around and having folks come into the Curious George Cottage, or when we go out to Town Square, that's always, um, a lot of fun. Our other youth programs include, um, our scavenger hunts, which are year-round, our weekly, at least weekly.
Thanks, Margaret.
That might rather just yell. Um, so our summer nature programs include, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Um, our summer nature programs include visitors who come to town, it includes working with the recreation department, summer camps, and last year we began a, um, summer camp specifically for three and four-year-olds. It does range from three to five-year-olds depending upon the children. And we also are bringing more music opportunities into the community for kids. We had, um, in addition to the, um, uh, music walk in Town Square, we had a fantastic, um, uh, program with New Hampshire Music Festival, which was a musical petting zoo, and about a hundred and twenty kids came through in one afternoon and got to meet musicians and touch instruments and even play them a little bit, so that was really fun. Um, our family programs include the monthly stargazing. It includes a storywalks, which again are, um, along the Curious George Nature Trail, and those are year-round. You can snowshoe them or walk them depending on the time of the year. Um, we have, um, a great community garden for those of you who don't make it back there. Come towards the end of summer, it's beautiful. And, um, many of you are cross-country skiers and you've probably seen our interpretive trail signs out there. We have great members who've contributed to that. And this year we were able to partner with the, um, with the rec department to get the signs updated to a little bit more adorable. I'm sorry, I didn't know. It, I can hear behind me, I'm standing right behind the speaker. Um, I was just mentioning the interpretive trail program or the interpretive trail signs that are out on the cross-country ski trails. I love seeing them out there and I know a lot of folks who are skiers and snowshoers love to see them too. Um, and again, as I mentioned, um, I'm gonna talk, um, our adult programs, we are still having our weekly literary discussion groups and for those of you who aren't familiar with this, this is a program where people have met for over twenty years, which is pretty fantastic and having them over at the cottage every week is a lot of fun. Uh, we also have increased our speaker series. Last year we had forty-six speakers. This year we expect to have at least thirty-nine currently scheduled. And these are times where there are people coming into the community, or excuse me, coming into the cottage and being a part of, of a chance to hear professionals, to hear locals, to hear a number of different, um, artists and authors. And it's something that is, I really find pleasure running into the valley, so. And our school and community outreach I mentioned in the beginning, we are meeting the needs of at least twenty-five hundred kids and we are growing those programs as well. So when the town chose to support the Curious George Cottage, which was owned by, or excuse me, it was actually built by Hans Ray, um, they committed to supporting a historical or, uh, historical building essentially. We have something so special here in the valley. We are the home of Curious George and even if we are not commercially, commercially representing that, we tell that to people every time they come through the door. We get to welcome them into our community, we get to let them know that the Rays did a number of things and one of the things that they did was create Curious George right here in the valley and, and those people are, there are some of you here who knew the Rays and that is something that we, we have a very unique opportunity to continue to present. So the town committed to supporting at a twenty-five thousand dollar rate. If we look at some of general inflation, inflationary costs, that dollar in two thousand seven today would be about thirty-one thousand. So our ask of additional funds will allow us to continue to make these programs strong, continue to present quality experiences to the people who walk through the door. It will support, it will support the organization. And as I said, we are community-driven. So I would really, um, like to be able to improve our, I think that's the next, the next slide. So obviously we are a service-oriented program, which means that a large portion of our funding goes towards labor. We have no full-time staff. We usually have two to three part-time staff, that includes myself. We do the programming, um, and one of the pieces that I'm looking forward to doing is improving our outdoor classroom, which would allow us to grow both the youth and adult opportunities and improve our Curious George Nature Trail, which has lots of opportunities. Any, oh, and, and there is a budget summary there, which I can generally say what we are working to do is lower our costs and continue to provide an exceptional experience for folks. Anyone have any questions?
Is that it, Leah?
I think that that's it.
Are there questions for Leah? Want to come forward to you?
We accept a lot of programs of interest, and we appreciate and enjoy them. I'd like to know what percentage of your income comes from the town versus private donations and memberships?
Sure. Um, so at twenty-five thousand dollars, um, the town provides about a quarter of our budget and, um, membership provides, um, significantly less than that. Uh, most, many of the people who do attend our programs are not members. Um, and so if we look at a quarter of the income or a quarter of our operating budget coming from the town, the rest is grants, private donations, memberships, and specific sponsorships.
I'm a member of the Ray Center board. The Ray Center is one of the things that makes water worth its weight. It's not just our, our location or the nation, or in the, in this room, but it is a sense of service to the community and visitors. And countless times, as, as Leah referred, we have to countless times, we get to come to the cottage, learn, learn about it, because they're interested in Curious George, and ended up, and end up signing on for the speaker series with a, with a, it's really worth a little pressure, Larry, but it's time we probably pay.
Thank you, Larry. Can I see another hand? Come on up.
So my question is very simple. Do you anticipate having to ask thirty-five thousand dollars next year in the Ray Center budget? Or is this just a one-time thing on some special program?
I'm asking for a ten thousand dollar increase to our annual.
So next year, if we would expect to see thirty-five thousand in the budget?
Correct. Or if, if it's approved, that's, yes.
Any more questions?
Yeah, hi, I'm Alan Salvo again. I happen to be treasurer for the Ray Center. I guess I'd start out by asking, are there any volunteers? I thought not. But one of the things that is stressed here is the town owns the cottage and part of our budget is to maintain the cottage. So we've got ten, twelve years of a constant twenty-five thousand dollars and inflation slowly erodes, uh, what we're able to do. The educational programs have been expanded significantly. But the, uh, the, just the normal outflow of gas, food, just a little thing like gasoline may fluctuate on the van, we are responsible for maintaining the cottage over fifteen, twelve years. The cost of maintaining the cottage have gone up incrementally. So all we're trying to do is put ourselves in a position of, uh, being able to constantly take care of the things that are necessary and sustain the educational progress that are going on. Someone unrelated to the, uh, question of this is, uh, the recreation department gets requests for, uh, s- uh, programs during the summer for the three and four-year-olds. The recreation department cannot fill. So Brooke and Leah worked together extensively, uh, cross-pollinating as it were. So we involved a little notice, a little, uh, running to get it going. We had started up a summer program for the three and four-year-olds. And, uh, we basically, uh, came close to breaking even on the first year on that. There was somewhat of a demand and quantifyable. We expect there will be more attendees this year for this three and four-year-old program. We want to be able to sustain these things. I think it's important for the valley, it's important for the residents, and certainly important for the visitors. So, uh, please consider our needs.
Thank you. Vicky, come on up. We'll let Cindy go first. Come on up, come on up, yeah, that's good.
Uh, Cynthia Powell from Springfield. I just want to know, is the thirty-five thousand dollars to, to maintain the cottage or is it to increase or carry through the program?
It's overall the operating budget. So the, in our operating budget does take into account that we are operating in the cottage and we do all the things that it takes to keep a building going. But it's not specifically for particular capital improvements or anything like that in the cottage. But that, now, it's overall.
Who had said that?
Go ahead, Cindy.
And then because of inflation, the cost of the, keep maintaining the building, and that makes sense to me, but then it really looks, I mean, the operations are fantastic, but I think of that as separate, as a part of the Ray Center, but the town owns the building.
Yeah.
So is the thirty-five thousand for the building or...
No, the town, the town is responsible for capital improvements like new roof, new furnace, or whatever. We own the building, we insure it, the town does liability insurance wise, but the utilities and, and the running, the heating of, the actual paying for the propane and that sort of thing is the responsibility of the organization.
Mark, do you want to mention the reserve fund?
Yeah, we do, we do have a reserve fund of about ten thousand dollars to, to fix the building itself.
Okay. Vicky, did your question get answered? Oh, good, okay. Any more questions about the Ray Center funding? Shall we bring it to a vote? All those in favor of supporting the Ray Center? All those opposed? It passes?
We've got one minute, one minute for the, on the clock.
Oh, okay, we have one minute left before we, uh, close the balloting for those three bond issues and then our, um, ballot clerks and town clerks and supervisors of the checklist will count them as quickly as they can and we'll report the results of those two. We are just about to close that box, I should say, those three boxes. It is seven-thirty-eight and the hour has elapsed. Thank you, good timing, because we're now moving to the big one, budget, the operating budget, Article eighteen. Would like to hear a motion?
Okay, so hold on to your wallets, pocketbooks, and don't look at your 401Ks for a lot of reasons. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of four million, two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations from any of the preceding articles.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so this is a simple majority vote required for the budget. Um, this is the general fund operation budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Now, this is a big one, so there are a lot of pages relevant to the budget that we're going to be referring to, so you probably want to have your, um, town report handy. The budget summary is on page fourteen and fifteen and then a few pages after that are the revenues, I think that's page twenty-two. Um, and then there's the department by department page on fifty-seven, um, and the long-term debt on page fifty-six. The debt by debt also shows how much will increase the total town debt if the bonded warrant articles pass. Capital projects are on page fifty-seven. Okay. Please, uh, understand that the budget summary, which is on page fourteen and fifteen, assumes that all of the articles pass as presented, which they have so far. We, it's unknown about articles four, five, and six, but the rest have so far passed as you see the tally. Okay, anything to say?
It is a, it is a very long budget. I can highlight some things for you if you want, or you can begin asking questions. What, how would you like to do it?
Well, I guess I'll open it up to the floor then for questions. So you can go to specific areas of interest and fire away.
So the overall budget, when you look at the total operating budget, it is increasing by two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. That's a three point nine or four percent increase over last year. The revenues are increasing by a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars, uh, about four point six percent. Sorry that this got cut off, but the net increase is ninety-eight thousand dollars, about a three point four percent. Sorry that this got cut off, but the net increase is $98,000, about a 3.4% increase over last year. There are several different departments that are impacting and causing that. On the expenditure side, we have capital project payments, which is under debt service on page 14. We have personnel benefits and health insurance increases. We have a new property liability insurance carrier. We received notice back in the fall that our, that our Climex, the company that we were with, was going to increase our rates significantly, so we, we put a request for bid out, and we actually went with a third-party insurer that, that saved us, I believe, $6,000 to do that. But it was still a significant increase over last year, as you can see from the budget summary sheet. In our police department, we've had increases in part-time wages and the retirement costs for our police officers. In the solid waste department, we have hired a part-time transfer station attendant that gives us better control over the materials that are being dumped and the way that they are being dumped at the transfer station. We did not have a well-controlled area up there with materials separated into the different categories and things like that. It's much better now, and we actually have increased our revenues by over half of the cost of that attendant. So the attendant costs about $25,000. The revenues have gone up 17 times. So that's just in a very short period of time. We hired that person last fall. In our water and wastewater departments, heating and electricity costs are increasing, and we have a permit that we have to get every year for the new well number four. I say new, it's been in operation for about five years now. But that permit monitoring that we have to do costs $25,000 a year, just about one permit. We have requested from VDS that we've done the monitoring for five years, and we've not had any issues with that monitoring. We have done a formal request to get rid of that, but we have the budget for 2020. Hopefully, we'll be able to cut it out of the budget next year. And then they got cut off, but the parks department, the reason that you see the large increase was we separated parks out from recreation and the, I believe it's $70,000, I don't have it right here in the money, but that is paying the benefits for our full-time position that we hired in last year's budget. That was in the recreation budget last year. It now has been pulled out and put into the parks budget. So you'll see, there is a decrease of about $20,000 in the recreation side. Also in 2019, that was only, it was only funded for half of the year. So we've seen the other half of that full-time position coming to the budget. So that's where those increases are. Any other, any questions after that? That's my general overview, right?
Those are the highlights.
Those are the highlights.
As you asked, does that satisfy you, Ken?
I don't know. Do you have another question? Does this drop? Is this, 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 is this,
And the cost of that is nine thousand dollars.
Anything else? Shall we bring it, oh, come on up.
I just want to find out about your stance on recycling or what's happening with recycling.
Can you lower the light please so that you can see the lighting here?
Sure.
Thank you. That's good. That's good.
I know. I didn't, oh, sorry.
I'm getting old. So for solid waste and recycling, we have talked about, we have hired a part-time transfer station attendant. We're trying to do better with control of the materials that are being dropped off up there. Recycling, there is, we do not have anything in the current, in the 2020 budget for a specific recycling program. And the reason, the reason for that is because we have been told that the Bethlehem landfill will only be available for us to take our trash up to until April of 2021 right now. So at roughly this time next year, we are going to be looking for a new place to take our trash. We do not want to make an investment in trying to develop or to start up a new recycling program for one year or less than a year. Okay, so as we go through the summer, we're going to be putting out requests for bids. We're going to be looking for a contract for the disposal of our solid waste. This is a big deal coming up on the horizon for the town. And it's not just for our town because we're part of the North Country Environmental Services, Pemme Baker Solid Waste District. And we share our contract with the Bethlehem landfill with, I believe it's 14 other communities?
Twelve.
Twelve others, twelve other communities. So 13 towns are going to be looking for a new place to take their trash. And none of the options that exist right now today are very good. They include going all the way to Berlin or all the way down, all the way up to Berlin or all the way down to Rochester. Both of those landfills, that distance that we will have to travel, our truck is going to be basically on the road all week long, probably six days a week to take care of trash. So we've got a lot of work to do this summer. It's something Jim and I are, we're, we're looking at all of the different options now, but that's why we're not doing recycling right now.
When you're doing this investigation, does that include looking at recycling?
Yes, if we will, we will look at, yes, we will incorporate a recycling program if, if we at all possibly can. The other problem we have with recycling is we do not have enough land in the town area where Town Hall is and the, and the Public Works Garage to build a structure where we can put something like a roll-on, roll-off container to put recyclables in. We can't, we don't have any room to build that. If, the problem with recyclables right now is contamination. If we just put that container out in the open, it will be rained on, snow will get in it, whatever. All of that material will be, will be damaged and we won't be able to dispose of it as recyclables.
So what decides the structure that we need to keep this container? Well, assuming it'd be a metal shed, correct?
We don't, we don't know at this point in time. We're, we are working on trying to find a way to do this.
Well, I mean, I'm a site planner and I offer my services to help you locate a structure within the town.
Okay, very good. We will take you up on it. And, and for recycling right now, we, we could, if we had a way to transport it, we could send recyclables to the Bethlehem landfill for the rest of the year that it's going to be in operation. But we can't do it the old way with a same garbage truck. Because the garbage truck is used for garbage and then you put the recyclables in it, it gets contaminated. They have lowered, that standard used to be high enough so that we could use the same truck to transport the recyclables. But now they have lowered the contamination that's allowed. And so are, with the garbage that's in the truck, it contaminates the recyclables and we end up having to dispose of them as regular trash. So there's, it would be a purely feel-good thing, right? Because we would contaminate the recyclables and they'd make us throw it away as regular trash anyway. And there is, there is a fee, there's a penalty for trying to do that, which actually increases the cost of getting rid of the trash. It, it's not, it, we're not the only town that's dealing with this. It's everybody in the state. The legislature is looking at it. They have a, they have a current study committee that's talking about it at the legislator, legislative level. But it is something that the entire state of New Hampshire is going to have to deal with in the next couple of years. Yeah, and we, we have asked outside contractors that do trash hauling and recycling to come in. We did have one, one company responded, this was about three or four years ago that we asked to do this. And the bid that they gave us was actually higher than our departmental operating budget at the time. So it, we're just, again, we're, it's a small amount that we're talking about. We only generate about eight hundred and twenty, eight hundred and thirty ton a year. So that's a pretty small amount when you're talking about town trash. We, we have asked Hampton Thornton if we could bring our recyclables down to their site in Thornton and they said no. Plymouth is not interested in any town participating with that. Yeah, we have asked both. Yeah, if you get a chance to talk to a state senator or a state legislator, please tell them that this is an issue. I know it, I know it impacts our businesses. It is something that we really need to deal with. And we want to have a recycling program. We just, there's just no physical way for us to do it.
I know that Hollis, New Hampshire, where I used to live,
Yep.
have the same problem. They have figured it out. I'm not going to explain it now. Asking you to look into two places, Hollis, New Hampshire, and Gilford, New Hampshire. They have figured it out and perhaps they could be helpful in helping us to figure it out.
Yep. Okay, we, we will contact.
Are there any more questions on the operating budget? Have we exhausted it? Are we ready to vote? Okay, so this is Article 18 that I've referenced all the way through. This is the operating budget. All those in favor of approving our operating budget? And all those who are not asleep and opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Do I hear motion on Article 19?
I move that the town vote to adopt the provisions of the Community Revitalization, whoops, Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program RSA 79-E.
Second?
I second.
Simple majority required here. Selectmen unanimously recommend this. Anybody speak to it?
At the 2018 town meeting, the town approved or adopted another state law, RSA 7281, which allows the town to grant tax incentives for commercial uses. And the town set it up so that it was any commercial use in any zone except the high-density and low-density residential zones. This is a, another state program under this set of state laws called RSA 79-E, which allow the selectmen to design and adopt regulations to incentivize the repairs, replacement, or expansion of any use in the town center. Okay, and by the town center, we mean the area inside of Valley Road, Snows Brook Road, and Tecumseh Road. So it'll be the center of town. Any use within there, the town, the selectmen will adopt a set of regulations that allow anybody who come in and make repairs to any of the buildings in that, inside that loop, to get, receive tax incentives for making those repairs. And the effort is to rebuild up and enhance the center of town. So we're really looking at the entire area around Town Square and our major condo lodges and other commercial properties inside that loop. So that if you adopt this set of, set of state laws, the selectmen then have to set up the regulations and conduct public hearings and you'll have plenty of opportunities to talk to them. And then each time an application come in, comes in for tax incentives under this program, there's a public hearing that's required before the selectmen approve that. So there's plenty of public input that you're still going to have before we can actually give up, give the tax incentives.
Questions from the floor on this? Ready to vote? Article 19, all in favor? And any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, I have the results here from the bonded articles, Article 4, 5, and 6. They have all three passed. Do, would you like me to read the numbers or?
Yes.
Would you like to hear the numbers? Okay. Article 4, 70 in favor and 3 against. Article 5, 68 in favor and 5 against. Article 6, 72 in favor and 1 blank vote. So 73 people voted out of 351 registered voters as of today. Those are the results.
I move to limit reconsideration on all preceding articles.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks. Before I, I'm, I'm going to recognize some projects that are going on in town that you might be interested in hearing a quick word about. But before I say that, I'd like to tell you the results of the town warrant, the official ballot. I should say town warrant and school warrant because we gave you two ballots today. Those were the official, it's called official ballot. It's regulated by law that you have to vote on certain things like amendments and election officials and school board by official ballots. It can't be done at town meeting. That's why we have the official ballot session today. And these are the results on the town warrant for selectmen another term, Margaret Turner, town clerk Terry Waite, trustees of the trust fund Deborah Wenger, library trustee Monique Loud, supervisor of the checklist, we have Alicia Walker, and moderator Marilyn Clarkson. There was also Articles, thank you, Articles 2 and 3, the town warrant were amendments. And both of those passed. Would you like the numbers? I didn't hear, I gave it, you saw on that, give it yes, no. David, I'll give them to you afterwards. I'll give the answer, I'll give you the numbers afterwards for those. Okay, good. So I also like to say that the school warrant was for three items. School board member Tom Smith, Tim, sorry, Tim Smith. And let's see, town clerk Lori Fernandez and moderator Marilyn Clarkson. These are all repeats of people currently on that school board and school functions. So that's it for official ballot sessions that went on today. Okay, I'd like to recognize Tom Gross, if he's still here. He's going to report, provide a report for us on the chapel committee.
So as many of you know, we've formed a committee for the Robert F. Kennedy Memorial Chapel. And this is our update on that. In order for this project to move forward, we need a 501(c)(3). And we have, we're lucky enough to have Attorney Jack Sanders retired and Larry Gannon working on this. Larry was the one who worked, put a lot of hours in on the adaptive 501(c)(3). So we're lucky to have both of those guys on that and that is moving along. The committee walked the land with Mark Decoto. It is between the beach and the arbor, but it's closer toward the path that goes down from the Golden Eagle by the playground. It's in that area there. So we then had the land surveyed and engaged a handful of architects. We narrowed it down to two. And we chose Eric Barth, who is a, a young, talented architect. He's lived in, had a spot here in Waterville Valley at Village condominiums his entire life. So longtime Waterville Valley roots. And he did a phenomenal job on his presentation and his design work. We'll be meeting with Eric and tweaking it, his design just a little bit. Then we'll be coming up with final design and we'll determine how much land we need from that design. Then we'll finalize the land parcel. We'll come back to the selectmen, update them on all of that, and then we'll begin our fundraising efforts. We do have a significant contributor to this project. And they are adamant that it is strictly used as a chapel, that it cannot be used for meetings and other things of that nature. So the number is pretty excessive, so I think we would probably agree to that. The selectmen will then decide how to include the parcel of land into a warrant article for 2021 at the town meeting for final approval. Then we'll decide whether the land will be deeded to the RFK Memorial Chapel or whether there'll be an easement. That will be determined. And hopefully we'll, a year from now, we'll get approval at the 2021 town meeting and begin construction in the spring. So that's the update. It's been a long night for everybody. I don't think you needed a lot of questions. So what I recommend is that we will at some point have hors d'oeuvres, some adult beverages, and you'll be able to ask as many questions as you like. But I, I kind of, like, the committee kind of feels as though this would be similar to what we did with the town sign, show you the designs and, and all that sort of thing. So, that, pardon me? The town. You're supposed to wait for the cocktail party, Tom. Yes, yes. Where's what? The cocktail party?
Your house.
It is going to be in between the arbor and the beach, but closer toward the beach. The ABBA. I'm sorry, the ABBA. It's where they're getting married now, the little arbor, Arbor. Like Michigan. And a rock band. I believe they're from Sweden.
Exactly. That's what I just said.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for staying, those of you who stayed. Okay.
Any chance we can get a sneak preview of those new architectural plans? At the cocktail party, I suppose? So Reggie? I'd like to recognize Reggie Brechner to provide a report about the Historical Society.
I'm going to do my slides. Um, Mark, can you have the, where are you? I am Reggie Brechner with the Historical Society. I'm president. And I just have a really, really short presentation. And I have pictures.
Mark has the little clicker. It's on his computer.
Basically, I started in 2018, just the concept. We wanted to preserve the important documents and things of Waterville Valley, the history of Waterville Valley. I came to a meeting back then and there seemed to be enough interest for us to get together and have a historical society. So we started with that concept. We also talked about the possibility of having museums someplace where people, both residents and visitors could come and see all of our history. So we have progressed since then to the point where we've had a society. We are a 501(c)(3) organization. So we've gotten that together. We have run several functions. Some of you, I guess, have been there for them. And we've got, we've had 73 members. And now we are reorganizing. We've never asked to reduce before. This year we asked to reduce. We have sent out new applications and we've gotten about 34 of them back. Membership fee is $25 a year, so we're encouraging people to rejoin. We've got, we've survived pretty much on donations and now the membership fee that we've had coming up. Before that, we had gotten a startup fee of $1,200 from the town. With that, we organized our 501(c)(3), have done mailings, got a post office box and just other things. And we've got about $6,000 in our account right now. That's money from donations basically and now our new membership. No. I have the beautiful, beautiful pictures of our museum.
I can put it up on the website.
Okay, so in the meantime, we have also gotten for free an architect to come up with thoughts for what our museum would look like. The possibility of doing museums, that's up to the town. That's why I'm here. I want to get another sense of how you guys feel about this. It would be funded through donations and us raising money. We're not asking for the town to give us any money to raise the building. The town, my understanding now is that they are in support of us putting it on the property that the library is on. I know there's been some concern about, we don't want to take away from the library. This would have nothing to do with the library as, ah, there we go. Okay. All right, so there's our first one. Next slide. Okay, what do you think? This would be someplace on the library property. It would be a building that would have basically open space. The walls would be fluid. We could move them around depending on the exhibit we had. If we decided to have a meeting in there, we could push them all aside. We could do cocktail parties to raise money. We could have events. It could be used for the town. We have some ramps there that would make it wheelchair accessible. We have a little pergola over there so if we wanted to do parties, things that the library could do with us. It'd be on the same property so we could share. We've got a vision of gardens being there too. So it's something that everyone could really enjoy. The basement space would be used for storage. We would want a full basement down there. It would be a prefab type basement as well, that's been recommended. With that, right now, the town has no storage space for their own documents and things. We could share space with them. So it would benefit the town as well, having this building. It would be a space that would be dry and not worry about flooding or anything like that. It would be climate-controlled. Right now, we have got many documents, 15 boxes worth of documents. I have not seen them. I don't know what they are. Brenda and Preston Conklin are basically are the caretakers of our treasures right now. And they're down in Dartmouth Library. None of us have access to them. We can't take them and do anything with them. We don't want to bring them up here because any place that we have here is not secure. It's not a good place to have them taken care of and preserved. They have not been catalogued and assessed and cared for in a special way that needs to be done. So right now, they're sitting in boxes. They're in a safe environment, but we don't have access to any of that. Brendan and Preston go down there from time to time and they do things with them, but that, that's pretty much it. We have other two steel file cabinets downstairs in the Town Hall that have got our other things. And that's all we have. So right now, this society has, we've been working with the resort to secure a space in Town Square where we can use it as a workshop, where we can bring things in, take a look at them, do some assessing of what they are. People in town have offered to donate things to us, physical things. A bowling alley floor, I mean, you know, that would be a really cool thing to be able to exhibit in our museum. So we'd like to be able to access some of the things, get them, get them out for people to see. And that's the purpose of the museum. But right now, we're trying to just get all of our things organized and professionally catalogued and assessed and digitized. That's another big thing. We need to digitize them. So we've got someone on our board that has offered to give us a scanner. We're going to try and get either a this intern from one of the colleges to come in and do it and tell us how to do this. We have to buy some software. That's what the $10,000 a year is for. It's basically for the preservation. Should we all choose to have a museum someplace down the road, we'll be working on that next. But this is just a concept of what it would be like. So that's all I've got for you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yes? It would be about 1,500 square feet. So maybe 15 by 30, something like that. A little bigger. I'm sorry, 30 by 50. I'm sorry. 30 by 50, so. We would like to finance the, building of the building through donation, yes.
And then the ongoing maintenance of the building, it's also by donation?
Hopefully through membership and donations. I would hope so. We're not, we're not going into this, we would make sure that we had funding. This is just a concept right now. It's all just a thought. This building, there's nothing as in stone. We're, we're just exploring this. I want the town to be totally on board with this because it is a big endeavor. The Historical Society, we could dissolve in a few years. And I want to make sure, my, my big concern is making sure that all of the history of this town is intact and that it's preserved. I think that's very important, so.
Can I just want to add a question? This, this is beautiful. At the same time, we have a lot of empty states in the town center, which is where all our visitors are coming to. Would we consider having something in the town center to bring work into the town centers and therefore catch and eye our businesses?
The problem with having something in the existing buildings in Town Square is that none of them would be appropriate for this. None of them would have the proper fire retention things that we'd need. They're not climate-controlled the way we'd need them to be. The space in Town Square, Tim, I guess you could speak to this. Do you have anything that we could have, say, for the next 30 years? Or, or is that space fluid as in you may be renting out to different things and changing things around? I don't know that the resort could commit to something like that. We want something that's going to be permanent. So I, I, I don't know. None of it right now would be an appropriate spot for a museum. I like the idea of it being right in town, but we also have a very beautiful historic library. So having it out there would be nice too. so having it out there would be nice too. And because we are pedestrian town, it would be nice to be able to have people to walk out there. That would be part of our historical tour too. We're gonna be having walking tours, uh, this summer. We've got the script court already. We're working in conjunction with the rec department to actually staff these tours. That, that just was some of my slides, but I think it's too late at this point to go into that. But we have a lot of programs going on, a lot we've already done. Um, we're gonna be working with the Ray Center on the, uh, lecture series as well, so. And we have a Victorian Day that we're trying to get, uh, off the ground this summer too. That would be town-wide. Uh, we'd like to involve every organization in town that wants to be part of it. So, join our organization, or if you just wanna be on our newsletter list, we put out a newsletter four times a year now. So, um, send me an email or drop me a line, call me, and I will put you on a list. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Reggie.
Thanks, Reggie.
Um, so that was Article twenty, and Article twenty-one is any other business? I believe David Britton has something.
Oh. I'd like to urge you people here to give some thought, uh, to asking the town to buy the thirteen point five acres, uh, of land that, uh, where the old dump used to be. It's, uh, it's behind High Country. It goes all the way to the bridge on West Branch Road. That's thirteen point five acres, approximately a third of a mile. But it's the main branch of the Mad River. So if you picture a rectangle that's, uh, two soccer fields wide and a third of a mile long, that's what the land is. It's beautiful, flat land. And what I'm urging is that the town take it over as a community park so that it would be down below High Country. That sand beach is there. The river is waist-deep at that point. Picnic tables, beautiful spot. Ray Kacharsky would love to have that little stretch of river developed and be dry fly fishing only. He could teach dry fly fishing to his heart's content. The, uh, in Meredith, they have a sculpture walk. In Newburyport, they have an annual build-your-own temporary sculpture that has some amazing, uh, creations that people walk through and like. It's currently zoned recreation. Uh, and that means that you could have the ice arena, which is not in the greatest shape, moved to there. You could have a go-kart track. Uh, you could have, uh, I won't spare you. You get, you get the idea, that, but why is it not being purchased for commercial reasons like that? Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars is what it's listed at. Thirteen point five acres. It used to be that a half-acre building lot got three hundred thousand. Now that's twenty-five times as much land, going for two hundred and twenty thousand. The reason that it's not being purchased commercially is that it used to be the old dump. And anyone who is going in there with their own money to invest is worried. If they try and put in some kind of building, they're gonna have the state on them and cleanup costs will be prohibitive. This does not affect us because nobody is going to disturb the surface of the soil. Anything that we put in there, dry fly fishing, uh, Mike's dream, pick-your-own blueberry garden, dog park, these things can all be right on the surface. And what you will have is something that improves the quality of life of the people who live here. It's not one hundred percent certain that Waterville is ever again going to be the destination of tourist attraction that it was from nineteen eighty-five to two thousand and five. But what it is gonna be, and always will be, is an absolutely beautiful place to live for families to bring up kids. It's almost unequal. I wish the town would invest in a community resource, a community park, that would improve the quality of life of people who live here.
Thank you, David. Could we take a sense of the meeting? How many people are interested in this? Can you raise your hands and your, are your cards, yeah? Interested in, in this proposal, to bring it forward? Maybe as a warrant article next year, it's a possibility. Thank you very much. Okay, so is there any more business to come before the meeting? Okay, if you're, I, I'd like to hear a motion?
Before I make the motion to adjourn the meeting, I think we should acknowledge Marilyn and the staff that were here all day and helped us get through all the voting. I move that we adjourn town meeting. Is there a second?
I second. This meeting is dissolved? Eight twenty-seven P M.